Welcome, everyone. The mayor's traveling and will be joining us tonight. Uh, first item on our agenda today is the interim budget changes presented by Alicia McAndrews. What, say yes or no?
Good afternoon, Council President, members of council. I have nine interim budget changes for your consideration this afternoon. The first is from the airport. They're requesting an appropriation increase of $2.1 million to complete the Airport Master Plan Capital Project, uh, which guides the long-term development, capacity planning and compliance with evolving aviation standards. Um, this project will be funded entirely through FAA grants and passenger facility charges. The second IBC is from the IT department and they're requesting to sweep funds from two completed IT projects that came in under budget um, and reallocate $110,000 in those unused funds to complete ADA website updates before the April 2026 federal deadline. So no new funds are requested. This is budget neutral and leverages existing contractors. The third IBC is from the fire department. They received a $90,000 grant from the city of Meridian um, to provide technical rescue training to Valley Partner Agencies. So this revenue neutral appropriation increase would allow for the city to be reimbursed for expenses they're incurring to provide that training, um, including overtime, equipment and instructional materials. The fourth request is from the library and they're requesting approval to accept $1,175,000 in donations to the Heritage Fund. Of this amount, 1 million is from the Friends of the Library, 100,000 is from the Library Foundation, and then 75,000 is in individual gifts. The department requests that the donations then be transferred to the capital fund um, to be used in the downtown library first floor remodel project. Um, things for uh, the ongoing deferred maintenance work and modernization to make the space more flexible, accessible and welcoming. The fifth request is from Housing and Community Development, and that is for approval to proceed with a $9.9 million funding contribution to the Dorado Station Affordable Housing Project located south of Fairview Avenue between McKinney and Dorado Streets, Eldorado Streets. Uh, this adds 212 affordable housing units for households earning 60% or less of area median income. Funding comes from a mix of federal home funds, um, emergency rental assistant subgrants and city housing funds. The city will lease the land at a below market rate for at least 75 years. Construction will begin later this month. Um, the sixth IBC is from Public Works, and it is an approval of an appropriation increase to their fleet services major equipment budget by $2,500 to finish installing two electric vehicle charges chargers at the Doorman Avenue Fleet Services Facility. This is supporting the fleet electrification goals. The seventh request is from Public Works as well, requesting approval of a $50,000 reven- revenue neutral appropriation increase to use the Bloomberg Philanthropies Mayor's Challenge Grant to study equitable geothermal billing for multifamily housing. The goal is to ensure fair access to renewable heating as the city expands the geothermal system. The eighth request, um, also from Public Works is a request for one-time appropriation increase of $275,000 from the geothermal fund from their unobligated fund balance to establish a strategic stockpile of durable, high-density polyethylene pipe for emergency geothermal repairs to reduce any downtime or service disruptions if an emergency arises. Um, the request is also to include um, sweeping $42,000 from several completed geothermal projects um, to reallocate those funds uh, to provide for any emergency repairs that may be needed in the future. And then the final IBC is from Public Works. Um, it's a budget neutral appropriation increase uh, to recognize $200,000 um, in a grant from the Idaho Department of Water Resources for flood risk reduction and habitat improvement at Seven Suckers Ditch. It requires a 50% match, which will come from the existing enhance the river capital budget. And Mr. President, members of council, those are all the IBCs and I'm happy to stand for any questions we have.
Alicia, I had a question, but I'd like to direct it to Jessica if I could.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thanks, Jessica. Uh, could you help distinguish between the two granting entities that are mentioned here, Friends of Boise and the other granting entity?
Um, Mr. President, members of council, uh, the Boise Public Library is really um, privileged to have two separate organizations that provide funding to the uh, Boise, uh, to the library uh, to support our capital and our programs. One is the Friends of the Boise Public Library and one is the Boise Public Library Foundation. Um, the funding that was as part of this IBC, uh, as Alicia mentioned, does include funds that came from both organizations. The Friends of the Boise Public Library have raised $1 million through their book sales, through their uh, community uh, pop-up sales in our libraries. Um, and that money is being transferred. At the same time, um, the foundation had a estate that had bequest money to the Boise Public Library, and specifically the family asked that that be used to improve youth services. Um, so this is why we wrapped those two together, um, because they were going to go to that first floor renovation. And uh, as Alicia mentioned, we're just so excited about the impact that that program or the impact that those investments will make.
Um, thank you, Jessica, for that. And as a follow-up on the Friends of the Library contribution, uh, it seems that at our last library board meeting, there was uh, trying to navigate that. Could you just let us give us an status update on? It seems like there's been some resolution since then based on this IBC.
Mr. President, that is correct, uh, and I'm really uh, pleased that after the special meeting that we had um, earlier this month, we were able to go back to uh, the Friends of the Boise Public Library, uh, who originally had wanted to transfer that million dollars to us in over a course of a year in four payments. Um, and working with our finance team and Public Works, um, because of the need to have that money in the bank so that we could then uh, commit to the contract uh, with our general contractor for the work. We needed to have that all-in-one payment. We went back to the Friends, we explained that to them, uh, and they did release the money to us last week. So it is in our bank account now, which has been approved by the board to transfer, and then we're bringing it to you in this IBC.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, any further questions for Alicia or Jessica? Can you entertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the interim budget changes as presented by staff.
Second, uh, Mr. Mayor, just a couple of comments. Um, uh, first, I think while we're on the library, just a big thanks uh, to the folks at the Friends of the Boise Library, the Boise Public Library Foundation, and then the folks at the Heritage Funds as well as the donors. Um, uh, like Director Dor said, this is a unique opportunity where we've got a group of folks who are also supporting the work that gets done at the library and that partnership is really important to the city. So just want to say thank you to all the folks who've been involved in that process and helping with this. Um, I was gonna ask a question about where the Seven Suckers Ditch is. Um, but I can ask that that offline. I think it's over by the water treatment center, um, or at least somewhere, uh, somewhere closer to the Boise River and and towards Eagle. Um, but there's, there's just a lot of stuff on here. I think that there's a lot of work that goes into it. There's a lot of grants, there's a lot of moving pieces that I think it takes to make all these things happen. All that work is navigated by the staff um, to figure out these uh, solutions to these complex problems. Um, even the one with uh, our fire department working with Meridian Fire to offer training both for our folks, for the folks as well, um, shows a lot of collaboration. So I just want to thank all the folks you put into the, the work on all these projects.
Okay, without further discussion, clerk?
Willis?
Yes.
Corliss?
Yes.
Hallie Burton?
Morales?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
All right, next up, uh, Rebecca Hup with uh, and Beth Sumner with an update on concourse A at the airport.
Good afternoon, uh, Council President, members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to be here today. Uh, this is a project that we've talked about a number of times. Um, and I'm going to give the overview and then Beth, our Deputy Director of Engineering and Planning, is going to give you an update on next steps and timelines. So much of this you've seen before, but didn't want to update you and kind of refresh anyone who might be following along, but maybe not quite as closely as we are following at the airport or as closely as council is following. But we've seen a tremendous increase in passenger travel. Uh, this has been the, the trend over the last decade, but especially as we've recovered from COVID. You can see that the population in the valley has increased 8%, but passenger travel has increased 34% between 2010 and 2023. We have an 81% increase um, in the last decade. So 2 million more passengers than we had before. Uh, and we're seeing this uh, in this not only in terms of passengers, but also the size of aircraft that are serving our community, which means that our peak travel time, we have more and more passengers congregating in our facilities at the same time. They're not evenly spread out throughout the day. So looking at this graphically, of course, 2020 is not really a great representation. Uh, we know things were off. Prior to that, our, our previous year was 4.1 in 2019. You can see we have almost a million more passengers in 2024 than we did in 2019. And year-to-date, uh, we're up 5% for the month of June. But what's really telling is we're up 8% year-to-date. So those are substantial increases on top of previous increases. And obviously, the compounding impact of that is substantial. So that's a little bit of background about where we are as an airport and the trends that we're seeing. That's what led us to introduce the BOI Upgrade Program. We started that prior to COVID. Just a reminder, all of this is funded with airport funds. None of this is funded with general tax fund or general revenue. So we would fund this with revenue bonds, passenger facility charges. Those are the fees that get charged on the airline ticket. Customer facility charges, those are the fees that get charged on the rental car contracts, and they are dedicated to rental car improvements. And then we'll use airport revenue as well. And to recap where we started, the buildings in the middle with the red roofs, those are our, those were our existing parking garages. And to date, we've completed the East Garage, the checkpoint expansion, the employee garage, and we have the consolidated rental car garage, or as we like to call it, the ConRack um, under construction today. And I'll just, again, just because I think it's important to show how much work we've done over this very short period of time. I'm just gonna recap these things for you. So you may remember, we actually updated our TSA security screening checkpoint. We took an old store that was underperforming, made it into additional queuing space. We added the TSA pre-check lane and also a clear lane. So we now have seven lanes through our checkpoint and nine podiums for ticket document checkers upfront. We also added the new parking garage, the public parking garage. We call this the East Garage. The very first phase of that was opening this new exit plaza and then adding 1,000 additional public parking spaces. It doubled essentially the capacity at the terminal. I will say there have been times, not often, but there have been times where we've been at 90% capacity at our close-in parking. So even though we've doubled our capacity in parking, what I'm telling you is it's still very full, uh, particularly in the middle of the week, that Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. And we continue to see that move forward. The other thing that we've done is we've constructed an employee parking garage. This is an enabling project for concourse A. This was a project that we had to do before we could build concourse A because where employees were parking is a future aircraft parking apron. So we added 700 stalls. People are not allowed to park here overnight because again, we wouldn't have enough capacity if people were able to park there for multiple days. And then this is a project, if you've been out to the airport, you've seen it, it's in progress today. This is a beautiful rendering of what our consolidated rental car facility will look like. You'll be able to see it, it'll be very prominent as you come up the terminal entry roadway. Uh, there will be a walkway that will connect to this facility. So our rental car facility will be close in to the terminal, so you will not have to board a shuttle in Boise to go get your rental car, which is incredibly important. So there's two phases to this. The one that's under construction today is Phase One. This is just ready return, meaning that where we're storing the cars for pickup and drop-off, as well as the customer service area. There is envisioned a Phase Two for a future point in time that has not been determined yet. But that is where we would do the quick turn where they're doing the, the maintenance on the vehicles. So think car wash, fueling, oil changes, uh, minor maintenance, checking tire pressure, that sort of thing. And again, this is also a enabling project for concourse A because where the rental cars are today is envisioned as future aircraft parking apron. And this is where we are today. It is coming along, we're expecting it to open in 2026. So the building itself has reached its full height. The framing is in progress, the ramps are completed through level five, and the concrete um, is complete. We're in the process of framing out that walkway that you can see is starting to take shape there. And that brings us to where we are today. And at this point, I'm gonna turn it over to Beth to talk about this future concourse A. You've seen this diagram before, but we do have some additional information and some handouts for you as well.
Good afternoon, it's a pleasure to be here. Um, so you may have seen this diagram before, and it was something that we included in our request for qualifications, both for the architect um, as well as the construction manager, general contractor, which is part of what brings us here today, um, because we'll have an action coming next week in terms of a contract to approve. So we'll go, we've got basically three main areas that we're focusing on. We do break them down into kind of more specific projects. Um, but really what we're focusing on initially is the concourse A development piece as well as the terminal improvements project area. Concourse B renovation, although it needs a lot of attention, um, we can't afford to do any construction work on concourse B because it's so heavily used at this point. We can't take a gate down. So we're really having to build out concourse A first so that we can then address a lot of the issues that we have on concourse B really related to the age of the facility. Um, so starting of course with the apron, so we have done Phase One A of the apron. And what this is going to allow us to do is actually to provide more remote overnight parking. Um, so we are a facility or an airport where aircraft will come and stay overnight. They may get some maintenance done. And so this allows for more flexibility in parking spaces for us to do that, as well as future apron space as we begin to build out concourse A. Um, I did want to highlight some of the project vision uh, concepts that we put both in the architect as well as the construction manager requests for qualifications. So we really wanted to um, embody this idea of sense of place. I'm sure I've definitely received comments about when you get off an aircraft in Boise, you don't always know that you're in Boise. So trying to uh, bring that element to our airport is important. Um, we also want to make sure that we have a good tie-in between facilities, um, between concourse A and concourse B, um, so that um, there's just this connection from kind of a curb-to-gate experience where it's a fluid experience for our passengers. Um, we're very respectful of uh, the folks that are um, employed by the city to maintain our facilities. So we take their input, um, we really value it. So wanting to make sure that we get materials that are sustainable, um, that we're using things that are energy efficient. Um, so we're really trying to approach that element of it as well. Um, we're always thinking about flexibility as Rebecca covered a lot of the growth. So we don't know necessarily what we'll have to be prepared for next. So making sure that we have spaces that are flexible and can um, answer the needs of our community. And then finally, the passenger experience. I think airports are becoming sort of more um, from like a hotel kind of experience. So trying to bring more of that to our space uh, so that our passengers will have um, not just sort of the transportation piece of it, but really kind of a good passenger experience as they flow through our area. Um, so this is what's been provided, um, minus all the language underneath it. Um, so you know, referencing kind of the first picture that we drew, we, there's been some development. Um, so want to highlight, we'll start with Area One, which is that light blue area kind of to the east um, of um, our existing facility. Um, so as we've gone through this process, we've recognized our baggage handling system is outdated. It's at end of life. Um, we thought we would maybe be able to make it work through the extension of developing concourse A, but we've since realized that that's not feasible. So we've really prioritized baggage handling system as our number one priority to get that constructed first. Um, and then we've explored areas where our current baggage handling system lives um, to be able to repurpose that as a central utility plant, um, looking to bring in um, a more efficiency with locating all of our utilities in a central location. Those two elements are critical for us to be able to open up concourse A. So we have to do those two things first, and they have to be ready to go on day one of concourse A. What you see drawn here, um, all of this is very expensive. So we're working through a plan that would prioritize the southern gates first. Um, so maybe approaching this more from a phasing option where we would do the, the first seven gates kind of on the southern part of it, and then after we can uh, generate more revenue, then approach the three gates on the north, which also have some complexities from a geometry standpoint. So we're really prioritizing those. And then from a terminal perspective, um, we know we need some additional ticket, um, ticketing space. Um, we have some things that we want to do from a queuing standpoint when it comes to the security checkpoint area to make that space a little bit more open. Um, and then some passenger flow kind of through the area with moving escalators so that you'd go through an exit lane and then exit down an escalator into the rotunda and really try to repurpose our rotunda space as more of a meet or greeter space versus where it is now. And you've got a lot of words on the slide provided that you feel free to read. Um, so where we are now, so we went through um, the qualifications. We received seven um, statement of qualifications from a number of really reputable firms. So it's a really great showing for, for Boise and for the airport. Um, and then we had the challenge of reducing it to a shortlisted firm, uh, four shortlisted firms to interview that took place in May. Through that, a very extensive process. Um, in fact, we've received feedback from all of the interviewed firms that it was the most extensive interview process they had experienced up to date. Um, that we made the selection or we're making the recommendation for Hensel Phelps Construction Company. Uh, so that's the contract that will be on the agenda the 19th of August. We had a cross-functional team and included both city employees as well as industry experts. Um, our architect and our owner's rep firm were participants as well as the airline. So I think we had a great committee to make that evaluation. Um, we'll bring it to you all for approval on the 19th. Um, and then our intent is to issue a notice to proceed um, for pre-construction services beginning in September. Now, we're going to do this by construction manager, general contractor. So we'll have uh, guaranteed maximum price elements. So each of those areas that I went over on the previous slide will revisit the council for approval with an amendment process. Um, so just to kind of review the draft schedule there, but pre-construction, we're planning that to take for the main elements that we just went over, really through March of '27, then we'll get into construction. Um, bond sales will also be a part of that slightly outside my area. Um, but we'll have a corresponding timeline that will also come for council. Um, and then from a construction standpoint, um, these are really the five high-level guaranteed maximum price amendments. You may see additional ones that sort of roll into or become um, like site preparation. Or if we have um, early equipment that we need to purchase, those may become separate guaranteed maximum price amendments that will come to you as well. You can kind of see the, the outline um, of the, the timing, starting with baggage handling, working our way through the utility plant, concourse A, and then the terminal improvements. And I believe that's our final slide and we're prepared to answer any questions.
Mr. Mayor, um, I'll just start just with a little comment. I, I, I mean, 81% growth, 2 million more people per year over 10 years, that's wild. Um, I think you should all be very proud of how that's been managed to this point. Um, I think we're so fortunate to have each of your leaderships um, on this project and maintaining the airport as well as it's going with that kind of astronomical growth and really excited to see the next phase and um, next generation of the airport materialize. Yeah, congratulations. I mean, really, that's some wild numbers.
Mr. Mayor?
Lucy?
Uh, I just want to echo uh, what Councilwoman Steed said. It is really remarkable to see the evolution of the airport. And um, I think the new options that are there, that are coming are really exciting. I'm very excited for ice cream and waffles, I gotta tell you. I look at that every time I go in. Can't wait. But I, I appreciate your leadership and understanding that airports are evolving and what people want. And uh, that they are becoming more and more of a place where people want to um, have amenities. And it's not just, it's not viewed as a train station where they come and go. There's a lot more to it. I'm curious with all of this remodeling, if there's going to be any exterior remodeling? Um, or if it's only going to be interior?
Um, I think at this time, most of it is going to be from an interior perspective. Um, we do have a project, I believe in 2026, where we'll be re-roofing the terminal building. Not necessarily, I mean, more of the have-to-dos versus the like nice-to-dos. Um, we do have an elevated roadway project coming next year as well, so there will be some elements there, but in terms of what we presented today, it's mostly interior spaces.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I, I've noticed with a lot of our other regional airports, they've done a really nice job of complimenting the amenities of their surroundings. So there's airports in Montana that really take advantage of the windows and you get to see the mountains. And I know that that's not something we're talking about today. We gotta, we gotta do the, the necessary stuff first before we do the nice stuff. But if we think about going that direction, I think it could really provide an opportunity to really emphasize all the beauty that we have here in Boise. And then one more question, and this is, I, I'm very curious about this because I think about how we, how we maintain Boise as the help of our community. What would it take, and this is, this is a question that isn't quite in, in the presentation, but what if our, what if a neighboring city, what if Caldwell decided they wanted to do an airport? How, will you walk us through how, what that would look like?
Caldwell actually has an airport.
But with like commercials.
If they decided to have a commercial airport, I think that would be very challenging for them. I think it's very unlikely that we will see an airport grow, a commercial airport grow in one of our surrounding neighboring communities. There are much larger metropolitan areas, so think places like Seattle, Southern California, Washington DC, you know, Texas. You have Houston Hobby and um, Houston Intercontinental. Those are really the type of super-large communities that have a second airport. Chicago, for example. I don't think we're gonna see another airport that has commercial service in our region. I think they, Caldwell and others can play an important role in a reliever airport. Uh, I think when we start to think about unmanned aerial systems and UAVs, there could be an important role for them there. I don't think we're there yet. For example, Salt Lake doesn't have a reliever airport that has commercial service. And they're significantly larger than we are.
Thank you. Um, you know, I think about Pocatello and Idaho Falls, and that's in our state. And I just wonder what, what we can continue to do to make sure that Boise's airport is the center of our valley versus having it go further west.
There are a number of operational and logistical challenges to introducing commercial service at another airport, both from a regulatory infrastructure perspective. So think air traffic control and regulatory compliance. So there are all of those hurdles, but then you also have the commercial hurdles of there's not gonna be an airline that's gonna want to serve Boise and then go, for example, serve Meridian. So um, I, I, I don't, I don't think that that is something that we need to necessarily be concerned about.
Thank you, you've put my, you've put my worries at ease, thank you.
Councilmember Corliss?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, um, thank you very much for the presentation. It is um, absolutely amazing to see the increase in travel from our Boise Airport. Um, and you guys have done a really great work. I was, I was out there recently, I haven't flown for a long time, and it was really seamless. And um, you wouldn't know that there was so much increase in travel because it was so fluid and easy to get through the airport. Uh, I just have a couple of questions. Is, do we know how much of this increase is from passengers in the area or passengers coming from outside the area? I'm thinking like McCall, Sun Valley.
I'm thinking like McCall, Sun Valley. Do we have any um of that information?
We do have some of that information and we do track that from an air service development perspective, and we're able to analyze that based on credit card purchases. So based on where the ticket is purchased with a credit card and what that zip code is, we can tell our areas of concentration. And so most, as you would expect, most of it is right in the Boise area. Certainly, we are the airport of choice for people who maybe live in McCall. When you start to get out to Pocatello and Idaho Falls, it's probably more evenly split between who comes to Boise and who comes, who goes to Idaho Falls or Pocatello, but I would say, yes, we do track that. I don't know those numbers off the top of my head, but we certainly can get council a map if you're interested.
Yeah, I'm just curious. I'm glad to see that we're able to track that information. Uh, second question is um in regards to the master plan that we're looking at and seeing the upgrades that we're doing here, can you kind of walk us through that integration? And then second part of that is just with the master plan, will there be updates at certain point? Are we just waiting until fiscal twenty-seven for that full report?
So we will be updating council periodically and Councilmember Morales is on our technical advisory committee because he is our representative from the council to the airport commission, so he is serving that key role. But we will also bring things back to you. There's a couple of there are a couple of parts of the master plan that have to be approved by FAA. The two pieces that have to be approved are the forecast and then the airport layout plan, and so those will come to council probably for approval before we submit those to FAA. But we will also bring you the concept, and I think you raise a very good point, which is where does the master plan dissect with this concourse project that we're doing? As you, some of you, I'm looking around, maybe one or two of you were on the city council when we did the last master plan. It proposed, for example, that at some point in the time, some point in the future, we would have to do concourse A. It didn't get into the level of detail of we would need to do a new baggage handling system, we would need to do a central utility plant, and so that has come out of the design. But the next master plan that we will do will look at how does the concourse A fit in with the rest of the components at the airport, so it'll look at things, for example, like the roadway, the terminal access roadway, how do all of these improvements align with that? It will look at where do we put future general aviation development? Where's the next concourse expansion? So it will look at all of those different components. It'll look at cargo, it'll look at uh corporate aviation and give us recommendations on all of those things, so they will tie together. This is a much more detailed and specific plan as it's related to concourse A and then the future redevelopment of concourse B.
Wonderful. Mr. Mayor, thank you very much, Rebecca.
And Mr. Mayor, just a couple more. Rebecca, usually come in, you don't get that many questions. Today you get all sorts of them.
I'm gonna say it's bad.
Yeah. Um, I think it's because people are so excited about what it is you're doing, and you kind of referred back to the master plan from a few years ago um that we worked on on council. And I don't know that when we passed that master plan that we envisioned that we would be talking about completing concourse A this quickly. It'd be like, we're going to think about doing this in the future, and now we're saying we're going to start doing this now, which I think is so exciting. Um, and it looks like you'll probably hit five million passengers this year. Um, I'm curious with the expansion of concourse A, if we sort of know some capacity as far as what that adds, you know, is if the city continues to grow, if we continue to see an increase? Um, and if we know sort of where we're at now versus what the new concourse will get for us from a capacity standpoint?
So our planning horizon with the new concourse, I would say is about ten years. We're looking at twenty thirty-four. With concourse A, concourse B, we're looking at out to twenty forty-four. Um, and then beyond that, our crystal ball gets a little more hazy. But I would say that's subject to change because if you had asked us in twenty eighteen when we did our last master plan, if we would be at where we are at today, I don't think this was the number, these numbers were not forecast until probably at least twenty thirty, if not twenty thirty-five, so the forecast is just that, it is a forecast, and I anticipate that if we continue to grow the way that we're growing, we will exceed the the current forecast. So I think to answer your question, concourse A, we could use it today if we could have it built today. So I think what we're doing with what we're building today is going to help us accommodate existing demand, give us more flexibility. Once we get into concourse B, that will be, and we remodel it, I think we'll be fully utilizing that facility at that point in time.
Yeah, as far as the concourses go right now, are we, are we hitting capacity? Are we close to maximizing the amount of flights we're getting in and out? Or do we still have quite a bit of room to fill on our existing concourse?
We are very full all the time. So because we're an origin and destination market, meaning most people start and end their trip here, one or the other, we're not a, we're not a hub, people don't transfer here. Most, our peak times are either first thing in the morning or last thing at night. And at that time, we are completely full. We do not have any more room. So in fact, not related to this project, but well, I guess somewhat related to this project, we are expanding what we refer to as the East de-icing apron, though that will help us streamline from an operational perspective, de-icing in the winter. But it will also give us what we call an RON, a remain overnight aircraft parking space, so we can put an additional aircraft there. We're also, we didn't talk about it today, but we are in the process of expanding concourse or apron A, so that will be the apron that will go along with the concourse on the south side of the con- the concourse in the terminal. That will give us three more parking spaces for remain overnight this year, and I think we will need it. I think we've already been approached by at least one airline, if not two, to be able to implement additional aircraft overnight or up up gauge, meaning going from a smaller aircraft to a larger aircraft uh once we build and complete those parking aprons. So we are, there are times of the day where, yes, it might be a lull. It's sort of, you know, oversimplifying it, but sort of like rush hour traffic. You know, there are definitely peak times where we are at capacity, and then the middle of the day where people are coming and going at the same time, there's a tremendous amount of congestion in the terminal.
Great, yeah, thank you. Um, and thanks for the detailed explanation there. I think it's important for us to know kind of where we're at and kind of you know, why we need to be potentially moving on some of this stuff and maybe even moving faster depending on if we see, still see that growth. Just the one last question. So we did the master plan a while ago. And then I, if I'm remembering correctly, we also, I think, then had to do an arts master plan as well. Um, will we have to do that in conjunction with this next master plan, or is that arts master plan still um living on throughout this process?
The arts master plan is not required document. It was something that we wanted to do because we want to make sure that we're incorporating Boise and our Boise values into our new facilities and infrastructure, and we want to make sure that we're implementing art in a thoughtful and meaningful way. But it's not a requirement that we have an art master plan.
And it carries on as far as timeless with any sort of expansion and growth we have got.
Yes, and we, in that master plan, we identified future opportunities taking into account that we would be doing a new concourse. The new consolidated rental car uh facility was identified as a key area for future art that will be very visible, and we're looking forward to unveiling that in twenty-six as well. I should note, in twenty-six, we'll also be celebrating one hundred years of Boise Airport. So it's, twenty-six will be a huge milestone for us.
Mr. Mayor, I have one last question. Do we think with the addition of the new gates, that could open the door to additional flight destinations? I know how important that can be for economic growth too.
Flight destinations are really determined based on supply and demand, meaning if passengers want to go there, that's where airlines will fly. I think we've seen some wonderful additions recently. Alaska announced non-stop uh to um Orange County and also to Bozeman will be going to year round. They did those last year as seasonal services. So it's exciting to see those, but the decisions about destinations are really driven by demand less than by infrastructure, although certainly having a place to put the airplane will be critical. So they do go together, but really it's more based on demand. I do, and we are having conversations with airlines about new destinations. I would be happy to come back and brief council at a future point in time about our air service development program. As you may remember, we have some priority destinations in our air service development plan that we've identified. Um, and we're always working on recruiting more air service.
Thanks, Rebecca.
Councilmember Morales?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, first, yeah, thank you so much, Director Hupp and Deputy Director Sumner. Really appreciate you coming. Um, it is just a pleasure to be on the council liaison for the airport. It it doesn't feel like an assignment. Always look forward to those meetings and um and and actually, last week's meeting, if anyone has any spare time, I really appreciated the update on the incentives, where are you looking, what what those next priority destinations are. I really appreciate that presentation and then um also the map that was shown uh where people are coming from to fly out of Boise. It really is. Um, if you think about halfway to Spokane and halfway to Portland and halfway to Salt Lake, uh, it really does look that way and and um so this is, you serve greater Idaho uh in our region, so um, thank you for all that your your team is doing. I, just a kind of few comments, thoughts, wanted to appreciate the update on the ConRAC facility, and you'd mentioned phase two. And I believe I recall this, but wanted to clarify, this is a phase that our rental car partners want and and are ready for immediately, but we kind of, just with everything you have going on, a little bit more conservative approach to phase that. Correct me if I'm wrong on that one. Um, and then wanted to just uh ask, kind of again, because I brought this up last week. Concourse A, is it a destination if money was to fall from the sky for a customs facility? Would it be able to house that?
Those are two great questions. Um, yes, the ConRAC phase two, the consolidated rental car phase two, our tenants are keenly interested in having that as an opportunity because it will increase their efficiency and their operation. From a timeline perspective, in terms of a workload capacity, from what can we do? We can only do so many things at one time, so that's one, one constraint. The other constraint is the financial constraint of how do we finance it? Because we just are putting about a hundred and twenty-five million dollars into that consolidated rental car facility, and it has to be self-sustaining because it has, it has to pay for itself. So when we look at our priorities for, are we adding more space for rental car facilities, particularly for the service side as compared to um, you know, the customer-focused area? That has to be secondary, especially to the air service um development and the development of the concourse. And then your second question, it just escaped me all of a sudden.
Santa Claus delivering a customs facility.
Customs and border protection. I I wish that Santa Claus would come and deliver customs and border protection. We are going to build the concourse with the maximum flexibility that we can. So that way, if we have an opportunity at some point in the future, we could incorporate customs and border protection into that. That's not the key way, that's not the key consideration when we are building that. Customs and border protection, if you have ever had to work with their design standards, I cannot uh overstate how complex and how specific and particular they are. Uh, it would be a very cumbersome, very expensive. We do have customs and border protection on the airfield today, but to build out a, what they call a flight inspection facility, an FIS, would be incredibly expensive and we might get a flight or two a week to or from Mexico. If we happen to get service to Canada, the chances are that most of those flights would be able to pre-clear in Canada and would not have to clear customs in Boise. So we want to preserve the maximum flexibility, but I do want to set realistic expectations about what is likely to happen, and I would say we're not likely to have a customs and border protection facility here, but we do want to be able to, if a flight diverts here, we do want to be able to accommodate it.
Thank you, Director, and um and that makes a lot of sense also with the standards to not be able to say, well, we have, we're slotting it in here, there's a space for it, you can just plug and play. It sounds much more complex than that, so thank you for being on top of that. And then um, and just in terms of the overall financial picture, I appreciate you also mentioning at the beginning of your comments today about how this um, how this is an enterprise fund and and the investments that are going into this is is revenues that are coming from the work that you're doing. It's really kind of a uh business, quite a business operation. Um, and I think sometimes folks forget that. We saw some of that in budget testimony. I think I saw an editorial about um about our budget and the investments going here and instead of going to roads and police. And so I appreciate you um ki- kind of mentioning that. My last thought would just be, um, you know, if you haven't considered it already for the celebration coming up, a five K on the runway. I don't know what it would look like, but I think it'd be pretty popular, so.
It would probably be extremely popular. We'll, we'll take that under advisement.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Corliss?
Director, just one question. Uh, we've been talking about an update in our zoning code for the airport influence area overlay map? And can you tell me, how does that fit in, or do we have a timing on that, or is that part of the master plan for twenty-seven?
Our master plan will look at the zoning and we are looking at zoning and we will be working with the new Planning and Development Services Director when the new person comes on board to really refine that AIA, but there will probably be some recommendations that come out of the master plan as it relates to zoning.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. Uh, just one final before you go. I'm wondering if you've seen season two of Nathan Fielder's The Rehearsal, and if you've given any consideration to pilots and co-pilots uh communications remodel of uh the concourse.
I have not seen season two. I haven't even seen season one. So I'm probably a little behind the power curve in my uh viewing of pop culture, but anyway, I would say in terms of pilot, co-pilot facilities for crews and others, we actually, Boise is an aircraft base for SkyWest and for Horizon, so we do have crew that are here, so it is an important part of our our thought process, although it's not the primary focus.
Okay, would just love for them to be able to have opportunities to converse in between their flights.
Well, I will make sure that I, as a homework assignment, go, go do a little, is that on Prime or?
HBO Max.
HBO Max, okay.
All right, thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, next up, uh zoning code incentives update, Kyle. With Deanna on deck when you get in trouble.
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Kyle Patterson. I'm the Director of Organizational Effectiveness for the City of Boise, and I'm joined tonight by my colleague Deanna Dupuy from Planning and Development Services. First, I'd like to state for the record, I'm in for the runway five K. If Director Hupp can make that happen, I don't know if I can run that far, but I'll do my best. Um, but tonight, we're here to provide an update on the work we're doing to improve the incentives in the zoning code uh for affordability and sustainability. Um, but before I talk about incentives, I want to use this as an opportunity to shamelessly plug my department organizational effectiveness. Um, our mission is really to partner with others in the city and in the community um to bring our skill sets and expertise to the table to advance city goals, and I think this project is a really great example of that. We brought our expertise around data and evaluation and partnered closely with PDS and the mayor's office, who have deep expertise around land use and and housing policy to really make these zoning uh incentives better. And I am just a firm believer that when we partner together, when we bring our unique skill sets to the table, we get better outcomes for the city. And just a quick reminder that this project is really one element of a broader body of work to evaluate the modern zoning code over time. Includes things like interviews, case studies, dashboards and reporting. And we see our roles at department is to help get you all the information you need to improve the zoning code over time. Uh, and to that end, I'm excited to announce the city just recently released on its website a new zoning activity dashboard. So this is publicly available for everybody, uh and it shows data transparently about what's getting built and where under the zoning code and what projects are you using incentives. Um, PDS is also planning to start releasing regular reporting this fall on uh process timeframe, so how long it takes to process applications, which I think will be really valuable to you all and to the public. Um, big shout out to Emily Dixon and PDS for for doing this work. She did great work. Uh, but the thing, we're actually here to talk about today zoning incentives. So first, I'm going to talk about how we got here, why we're doing this project, um, how we are responding to feedback. Since I spoke with you all in May, we did another round of feedback and I want to share what we learned. Um, we'll get into detail with the proposed incentives that we plan to submit as a ZOA later this month and then talk next steps. So one of the elements of the modern zoning code that we know wasn't getting the outcomes we hoped for it to get so far were the incentives for sustainability and affordability. So last summer into the fall, we embarked on a pretty detailed analysis of the those zoning incentives to understand what's working and not working. That included a financial analysis of the incentive, looking at best practices, uh interviews with developers to understand those incentives from their perspective. Um, and we then proposed to you a new approach to zoning incentives based on what we learned. So just really quickly, we learned that the value of incentives is insufficient to stimulate affordable and sustainable development, right? So for an incentive to work, the value of the incentive has to be greater than the cost of what we require. We found that the opposite was true and there's a pretty big gap there. And so we proposed adjusting the incentive value to make them pencil. We found that incentives are confusing, both to developers and also to planners, frankly, which makes it hard to communicate. Folks aren't going to use an incentive if they don't know what it is or if it applies to their project. And we're proposing simplifying those incentives by reducing And we're proposing simplifying those incentives by reducing the number of incentives we have. So there's currently around eight, but we want to get that down to two. And then finally, every site and project are different and a one size fits all approach limits incentive effectiveness. So right now, the way the incentives work, if you're building something in MX three zone and you do affordable, you can get a 50% parking reduction. That's your one option for an incentive. That might be really, really valuable to you if you're building like a podium style building, or it might be totally useless to you, right? You might want to actually build more parking and so the incentive isn't worthwhile to you. We're proposing creating a new menu approach where developers can pick from a list of potential incentives for what matches best for their project. So as I mentioned, since we presented to you in May, we did another round of user feedback. Specifically, we interviewed eight developers with sort of a combination of large scale and small, small scale developers, excuse me. Combination of affordable and market rate developers. And we received some really, really positive feedback about our proposal. So universally, everybody said this new approach is a significant improvement over the current incentives. And there is particularly strong support and interest in the flexibility that you get out of the menu approach. That was a really popular piece. And I will say, one of the big themes that we got from the interviews was a desire for more flexibility for situations in which a project may not be able to adhere to the, uh, the letter of the code because it's the, the size of the site or the, the type of site, but they can adhere to sort of the spirit of the code. And so you'll see some, some ideas there on the next slide. We heard a desire for streamlined affordability requirements. I'll share more about that in a second. And then a request for additional incentive options. So based on what we heard, based on that feedback, we're proposing some changes to the, the zoning incentives based on what we presented to you. One is to base rent requirements on unit size, not household size. So thank you all are aware, the way that you determine the maximum rent you can charge for an affordable unit is based on household size. So if you are renting a unit to somebody, that's a two person household, the maximum rent you can charge is less than if it's a four person household, even for the same unit. Particularly for small scale infill developers that has a big impact on their sort of financial planning and their revenue forecasting, which might make them less likely to want to participate in incentive program. So we're proposing changing the way we calculate the maximum rent to be based on the number of bedrooms in the unit. So if you have a two bedroom apartment, this is the maximum rent you can charge regardless of the household size. We think the streamlines of process makes it easier for everybody and is also following best practices. So low and, uh, low income housing tax credits, HUD also have some standards around bedroom size. We also propose refor, we reformatted the menus for clarity. So changing some language, changing some titles, the structure to make it clear for folks. And then we're proposing adding a few new incentive options based on what we heard. So first permit existing sidewalk in our one zones. So right now, if you have a development and the existing sidewalk doesn't meet standards, you might have to replace it with a sidewalk that does, which can be costly. This incentive would allow you to keep your existing sidewalk as long as it meets minimum standard. So it has to be at least five feet wide, for example. The next incentive we propose adding is reduced rear setbacks for parking structures. Again, we heard from developers that this can be a real challenger barrier for them in some cases. It can keep them, the current setbacks can keep them from building an extra unit or force them to build a two story instead of a one story, or generally take away some green space from the development. Uh, and so this incentive would allow them to reduce setbacks in those cases. Third bicycle parking location and design standards flexibility. This goes back to that comment I had about flexibility, uh, for the spirit of the code, if not the letter of the code. So for example, in this case, one of the requirements about bike parking is that short term spots must be within 50 feet of the entrance. So, but that might not be possible again, because of the size of the, the plot or the shape of the parcel. We might allow them, uh, to put those spots within 75 feet of the entrance, for example. Zone specific parking standards flexibility, you know, one of the things we require in many MX zones is structured parking. So the parking has to be in a structure instead of surface parking. And again, in some, in some cases, that's really difficult to do and costly to do. But the, I think the water cooler building you see in the image there is a great example of a development that follows the spirit of the rule, if not the letter of the rule, right? So the parking there is tucked in behind the white part of the building. So it is actually surface parking, but it still is a really good design. You don't see the cars. It doesn't feel like a surface parking lot. So that's an example, the certain, that sort of flexibility we could offer as part of these incentives. And then finally allowed use flexibility. We heard a lot of interest in the old legacy planned unit development permit, uh, which, in which we'd allow some flexibility around allowed use in certain cases. If the market dictates it, or if the certain, uh, certain parcel doesn't really allow a certain housing type.
Kyle, on the allowed use flexibility, are you, well, some piece of feedback that we've gotten from developers is that the active ground floor, floor use is prohibitive uh, in some types of development, including housing, would the allowed use flexibility include considerations for whether or not the ground floor needs to be activated?
I don't think so. I think that would be totally separate. Dan, is that correct?
Yeah.
Which one? Yeah. So there is a separate incentive that, that gets at that.
Okay.
But not this one specifically.
Cause I think about the, if there's a developer willing to put affordable housing in a mixed use zone. I want to incentivize that even if commercial doesn't make sense in this moment in time in that place on the ground floor. Just thought.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Corliss.
On this particular one, the allowed use, uh, flexibility, Kyle, can you give us an, an example of this? I'm just having a hard time.
Yeah, the one, the one example that I, it comes to mind as we were having these conversations was with a local affordable developer nonprofit that is looking to build pretty dense developments in say MX zones that might include some single family homes, but alongside condos and townhomes and larger scale development. And they have a strong sort of desire to build sort of really mixed use developments that have different types of housing types. Currently that would be prohibited because of it's in, in an MX zone, but it might be allowed in this case in exchange for affordability.
Thank you.
This might be a question for Deanna, Kyle, but, um, I'm curious as we've better come to understand the implications of the bicycle parking location and some, maybe some problems with that. How do we weigh putting this as an incentive versus just not straight in a code change and giving staff more flexibility with bicycle parking?
Yeah, there's always a trade off to be made here, right? I think one of the things that we learned loud and clear through this process is that to have an incentive program that works, you have to be able to offer stuff that's valuable. And so everything that we make available to everybody makes it harder to make an incentive program that works. I will say bicycle parking, um, was one of the things we most often heard in our feedback as being an incentive people were interested in. So the risk of doing that would mean that we'd be removing a really, really valuable incentive to make affordability and sustainability happen. But of course defer to you all as the policymakers on that decision. So that's what we heard. Uh, now I just want to get into the specifics of what we're proposing. This is the changes to affordability requirements. This is exactly the slide I presented to you in May. We haven't changed anything, but just to make clear. Currently, uh, for affordability, we require 60 to 80% of area median income. We're proposing changing that to 80% of area median income across the board to improve that financial feasibility. But also because we think those vet units are still really valuable to our community. 80% AMI is still below market rate for new construction and we expect rents to rise over time. So in 30, 40, 50 years from now, those units are going to be much more valuable. Currently in the code, uh, we require that 25 to 50% of units be affordable. But we were proposed changing that to 10 to 25% of units, again, to improve the financial feasibility of those incentives. And then lastly, currently in the code, units must remain affordable for a period of 20 years. And we propose increasing that to 50 year duration. Uh, and that's just because of the nature of, of sort of finance and real estate. Uh, that, that doesn't really material impact the feasibility of, of the incentives at all. And that's what we heard from the developers too, um, that it really wasn't the thing that was going to make the difference between their decision, whether or not to participate in the incentive. Uh, and then of course, the increase in community benefit is huge, right? Going from 20 years to, of duration to 30, 50 years of duration is really, really big for our community. Uh, ultimately that's our goal is long-term affordability.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Corliss.
Yeah. Kyle, on this particular one, I know there was a lot of feedback on this, um, in the zoning code change. And I'm wondering if we had any discussion on maybe, um, looking at this for different types of housing. So I'm giving examples. So I think of, um, one thing we heard about is if there's an infill or mom and pop developer, they would be more likely to do it 20 years because it's a generational, it's one generation where they'd be looking at. Whereas 50 years really felt like it was too long for adding, um, that maybe that one housing unit or the two or three housing units. Have we had any consideration of maybe scaling this for different types of housing?
Yeah. Uh, council member, great question. Thanks for asking that. We did talk with different types of developers and got feedback from them. And certainly we did hear slightly different things from like larger scale developers who were just generally like, eh, that's not really how we do our calculation. Doesn't really make a difference for us. Some infill developers were more like, oh, that this feels like a long time, right? Like not necessarily like I won't do it or I will do it, but it just feels like a long time to do it. But based on our, um, information that we have from our consultants who are experts in this area, who work across the country and have seen different variations of this. We've been advised that really like bringing it down to 20 years will not have a material impact on new units, even for that smaller scale development. And so it's this sort of trade off is like, would you rather have 10 affordable units for 50 years or 11 or 12 for 20 years, right? And to me, it's a pretty clear answer, given that our goal is long-term affordability.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, um, Kyle, I, I would agree with you. And the longer we could have the affordability, the better, um, I think our residents and for the city would be. I just, this one concerns me because the amount of feedback that we had received from the public, very specifically um, on this item and the adjustment that was made for that duration.
Uh, Kyle, I got, this might be for Marine. I really want to understand if the zoning code, if we're only incentivizing 80% AMI, we know we still have needs at 30 or 60% AMI. But I think as council members, we have to start thinking about how we fulfill those needs apart from the zoning code with our, like, like the investments that we're making on public private partnerships. So I guess with this change, what kind of supply at the 30% and 60% AMI levels do we need to be thinking about? And do we have to kind of step on the gas on those if we're kind of backing away from a 60% target in the zoning code?
Yeah, that's a great question, um, Mr. Mayor. It's, it's, it's complicated, right? Because this is a complicated issue. Housing affordability isn't a thing where there's one silver bullet, right? We have to have different solutions that attack different parts of the problem. One of the things we realized by doing the actual financial analysis of this is that we can set the affordability level at 30% or 60% AMI and then nobody will use it because it's just so costly. So the decision on our mind was, do we want some affordable units at 80% AMI or none at 60% AMI? So I feel strongly, this is the right strategy for us at that 80% AMI level. But I, I think you're a hundred percent correct that it, it's sort of, uh, requires us to really double down on how we make 30 to 60% AMI units happen. And one of the core strategies, of course, is through direct investment and public private partnerships and all of those things.
Okay. Uh, I just want to offer a comment on the 50 year duration. I don't remember a great deal of public feedback about saying that was too long. Councilmember, um, Bajant and I kind of led the charge in getting that from 50 years to 20 years uh, over the objections of Tim Keen at the time, who said, every jurisdiction is saying, please make it as long as you can. And really our motivation wasn't, we didn't have some particular, 20 wasn't magic. We just thought that 20 sounded more feasible for developers than 50 years did. Um, and so I, I'm willing to, uh, like, I, I want to know what's feasible. And that's why I was motivated to make that change, uh, over the objections of planning staff a couple of years ago. And I'm totally willing to reconsider anything that we did, um, to get to a feasible incentive to get the type of development that we want to see. So that's just my two cents on it, but certainly open to feedback on it.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. And I, I would just add to that, that these are really hard decisions, right? These are trade off decisions with imperfect information. Uh, and so far the information that I've received suggests that 50 years is the right term. But it's something that we're going to have to learn and iterate on over time. It's possible that we move forward with this proposal as it is. And we really saw that we're, we're not seeing the sort of incentive use that we want to see in infill and smaller scale development, in which case we could revisit. But I feel confident that the information we have to date suggests this is the right approach forward.
Councilmember Will.
Yeah. Kyle, thanks so much. Um, I want to talk a little bit more about the 50 year duration and, and as President Nash alluded to, this was something that we talked a lot about during the zoning, or not a lot about, but we did change during the zoning code. And I have concerns about going to 50 years. I'm going to turn 50 this year, Kyle. That is a long time.
Congratulations.
To say to someone, you've got to have a 50 year, uh, deed on this. And I would much prefer that we do not regulate that in such a high number. And if, if developers come to us and say they'd like it longer, I think that's, I think that's a better choice than us mandating a half a century. It, it troubles me greatly. Um, it seems like it's a philosophical issue and I certainly is for me. But that's an issue where I, I really struggle with this. Everything else looks great. I understand where you're going. But I would, I would like us to not regulate a half a century on this.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, a question. So I'm, I'm guessing that one of the reasons why we just shifted to 80% AMI is that given the choice between, choose between 60 and 80% AMI, nobody was choosing 60% because, you know, why would they? If this is an incentive that they're using, they're still going to try to figure out how they can make things pencil as best they can. Is that kind of why we're just getting rid of the range? Just because why would anybody choose lower if they don't have the?
Mr. Mayor, council member, yes. And I would also say that just if you look at the finances of it, the cost of getting from 80% right now to 60% is really huge. It was a big piece of that gap that we talked about between the cost of the, the value of the incentive and the cost of the requirement. So just by going to 80%, it really closes that gap quite a bit and just makes it more feasible. So I would say it goes beyond just like, if you get, have, can choose between one or the other, which one do you want to do? And more like, it just isn't financially feasible right now for 60% AMI to work. And any of the units that we were seeing, uh, through the current incentives, unless they were in an affordable development that's receiving a lot of other investment, were all 80%. And I think we're mostly ownership, in which case that 50 year duration has less of a role. Because if you're going to sell that unit, then you care less about how long it's affordable.
For sure. And I guess one thing here that, that I guess like, in my mind would include is if I'm a developer and I'm building one of these things and I just decided that I want to do 70% AMI. I can charge less if I want to and I can still get the incentive. I'm not obligated to choose that 80% as long as I'm choosing 80% or below. Like there would nothing that would say, oh, actually you have to choose 80% if you want this incentive. I'm, that's common sense.
Councilmember, yes, that is exactly right. That's not, not more than 80% AMI. And in fact, we've had some, um, affordable developments that are using these incentives that are, uh, much deeper affordability.
Yep. Perfect. Um, and then I would say that I think that we're all sort of remembering, uh, the conversation correctly. There was a great deal of, uh, debate, but I think that the great deal of debate was actually between council members. Not necessarily a massive amount that we were hearing from the public, but actually between us going back and forth on this, you know, 50 and 20 years. And I guess I would just say that as we're, we're looking at these things, you know, we see, um, you know, a sort of shifting from 60 to 80% to 80%. We are looking at a smaller percentage of units, um, versus the larger percentage of units. So we're making some sacrifices in some area to draw some of these incentives. And I, so I see this 50 year, you know, as this debate that we had before, we're hearing that this wouldn't necessarily make an impact, but we're also giving a little bit. Um, and we're getting a little bit there as well. And so I think that there is some balance when we look at some of these changes that we see there. So for my two cents, um, yeah, but there, yeah, there was a lot of discussion about this during that meeting. And I think that, you know, we're still trying to figure out how we can get that right.
Thank you.
Counsel, I just noticed that we have a, uh, executive session, so we'll need to kind of wrap up in the next couple of minutes. Kyle, I don't know how much more you have left.
I have a couple more slides, um, which I don't need to go through in detail. There's, we're proposing two incentive menus, one for urban housing you see here MX R2 in our three zones and a second menu for neighborhood housing. So our one zones, the way it works, as you've seen before, is if you build a development, uh, that provides a community benefits shown on the table on the left, you get points and you can redeem those points on the incentive list on the right. For the sake of time, I won't go through the list of incentives here, uh, but those are in front of you in, in your memo. The second incentive menu is neighborhood housing for our one zones. Same approach there. Uh, you have the details in front of you. The one thing I'll point out, which is important is one change we're proposing from the current incentives is what qualifies as a strategic infill location. So these exist in the incentives now. It's a small subset of parcels within our one zones. Currently there's a really complicated set of criteria that determined whether or not you can be in strategic infill. That's created problems for folks and confusion about like, does my parcel actually, you know, meet the criteria or not? We're proposing sort of simplifying those criteria. So they're just geographically based. So if you are, your parcel is within 300 feet of a collector or arterial or. if you are, your parcel is within 300 feet of a collector or arterial or a quarter mile of an MX three, four, five or zone. So that would be a, a change that we'd be making in our current incentive. But just next steps really quickly, we'd be submitting the zoning ordinance application, the ZOA in August later this month. October would be planning and zoning commission public hearing. And then December, depending on agenda, would be coming back to you for a public hearing. That completes my presentation.
Could you, Mr. Mayor? Could you go back just a second? Jimmy, could you go back to the, the timeline again? Okay. Councilmember Albert.
Yeah, just, just a statement here. One appreciation for the work that went into this. I think that there's, I think I might look at it a little bit differently than when you introduced of, of trying to go back and fix some problems. I sort of see of like, are people using these incentives or not using these incentives? I see a sort of actually going back and taking just a little bit more of a focused approach. When we were doing the whole modern zoning code, we were looking at everything and probably didn't have time to spend quite as focused amount of effort in this area. And the reason why I think that that distinction is important to just say, is this working or is this not working? Is that we're in a really weird housing climate right now and a really weird economic climate where we have interest rates that are all over the place. We have terrorists that are causing unpredictability. There's a lot of uncertainty in the financial sector. And I think it's always important for us to figure out how we can make something a little bit better. But I also think that we need to make sure that we're giving some of these time to actually to build out and to see how the modern zoning code is working. And I wish that we could just say that like, oh, like we got something a little bit wrong and we need to fix it and not necessarily be looking at the larger picture of the problems that we're facing. And so I really appreciate all the work on this. There's a couple of things in there that give me a little bit of heartburn, but not enough to say like, let's give this a shot. We heard the right amount of information from a focus group of people. We took what we were doing well. We kept some of those things. We changed a few other things. But I think that when we do adopt this and we do look at this, we need to continue to evaluate, but we also need to make sure that we're giving it the time to do the work that it needs to be, needs to be done. And then the council president, Nash's comment, I do think that there's some things on here to look at and say like, should these be incentives or should these just be things that we allow to happen? The five-foot setback for parking is one of those things where I just say, why not? Why are we not doing this all the time just to drive down the cost and increase the amount that we can get onto a specific lot. So I think that that's something for us to consider as well. But I really want to see this play out and with all the input that you got and for us to be really focused on having a predictable development pattern that we let developers get used to and get more projects, you know, sort of in that habit.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Kyle.
Mr. Mayor. But comment, I'll keep it to me.
Really got to go.
I just want to, just want to make a quick comment on, just to riff off of Jimmy, Jimmy talking about, we're creating these carrots, which are really good for, to incentivize affordable housing. But they're created out of regulations on market raise housing, which a lot of Boiseans live in. And so I think I, I just want to kind of just share out for council. I, I think we really need to look at some of these things that probably just need to be in zoning code for all projects, regardless of affordability requirements. And I think parking is one of those by guns.
Thank you.
All right. Counsel, I'd entertain a motion for executive session.
Mr. Mayor, pursuant to Idaho Code Section 74-206, when C, I move to enter executive session to communicate with legal counsel on acquiring an interest in real property.
Second.
Clerk.
Willis.
Yes.
Corliss.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Ted.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.